Okay, I'd like to call this City of Urbana Council Committee of the whole to order with the clerk please call the roll.
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Okay, are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, we have three staff reports, Bill Gray, Public Works.
Just wanted to let council know about this past week and the significant snow event, freezing, very cold temperatures, blowing snow. It was a real storm that we haven't quite seen in some time, starting there Sunday morning or thereabouts, and we really worked 12 hours on, shift 12 hours off, midnight to noon, noon to midnight, Sunday through pretty much Thursday. What was difficult about it, in particular, were a couple items. One was just the blowing and drifting snow you would plow, and literally 20 minutes later, in some locations, it's like you didn't even touch the streets. But even probably as difficult was the abandoned cars that we had, and the wrecking companies were so busy that night that, in one case, you know, we had to wait up to two hours to have a vehicle move. So, when, I guess, a comment to the public at large is, is when you have a storm of that type in particular, when we really say, "Stay home," we really mean, unless it's an absolute critical situation, to stay home, don't be on the streets. You can become an obstruction, you know, to snow removal efforts. You could be a hazard potentially to crews that have to rescue you if you do get stuck. Try not to park on the street if you can. If you can park in your driveway, in your garage, what have you, please don't park on the street. Those are really, 99% of the time, you can do that on the street, but on those types of storms, it really is something that can help us. So, there were a lot of obstacles that were in our way, you know, during the heat of the storm, but all in all, the crews themselves did an outstanding job. They really took it upon as a real challenge to step up and work, and there were guys that, you know, slept overnight at Public Works or got a hotel room, or others opened their homes so they didn't have to travel far outside of the community to get back to work the next day. So, that was great to see, that enthusiasm and commitment to the city. So, I thank all your comments today about three efforts. It's kind of a, it was a very tiring week last week for our crew members, and today they're kind of getting their feet back here, so that's good to see. On the negative side, this type of storm does bring out the worst in the potholes. Yes, we've had a lot of calls, a lot of emails, I'm sure you have too. We have three pothole crews working. We may even stretch it into overtime on a Saturday. It's all weather-dependent now as to snow, or rain, or what have you. We have ample material available, so there's no shortage or anything like that as far as the cold mix is concerned, but I have to tell you that although this cold mix is a very high-quality, expensive material, it doesn't necessarily last all winter long, so we may be back, if we have more precipitation and extreme cold and freezing and thawing cycles, we can be back again at the same pothole, literally. So, but to conclude here, Windsor Road is by far our most serious distressed situation out there. We're spending a lot of time, a lot of effort, to try to keep it passable, and I just, I know you've heard this for several years, but we really, as a council, as a city, we have to address that street as soon as we can because the alkali-silic reaction just seems accelerating even worse than when we first identified it in 2006. So, it's a big challenge before us, and I want to work with you on it, but I really plead that I'd like to get construction going in as soon as we can. We have to rebuild that road. So, those are my comments, and I appreciate locations. If it's your next neighbor, or you drove down the street, give us the location, even though we have crews out, you never know. It's helpful to us to make notes, call Public Works, email Public Works. We monitor all that, and we want to get the word out to our crew members to do that. So, again, I thank you for your support, and the guys and ladies did a great job.
Diane?
Is there a hotline number that people should call to report?
If you call any Public Works phone number-
Can you give us the number?
We will, 384-2342.
384-2342.
2342.
Okay.
But even the other numbers, anyone that picks up the phone will make sure it's routed to the appropriate person, but officially, that would be the number you could call.
Thank you.
Sure. And we'll try to even, particularly for Windsor Road, have a little more information on our website, since that seems to be a lot of calls, an interest to that, and I think you know this already, but by passage, at our last council meeting, I am, we're finalizing the contract with the consultant to start the preliminary design work on Windsor Road. So, we're starting the process here, and for the public's information. So, that will take a while to do. We want to come up with a design, a cost estimate, get through the, any environmental or other hurdles there might be out there to rebuild a road, and we're going to hope to seek state funding to help the city out in this case.
Other questions for Bill? Eric?
So, I noticed that there are seven symbols in P-O-T-H-O-L-E, so it would be great to have a special phone number that was P-O-T-H-O-L-E, if that's possible and cost feasible.
We'll work on that. Thank you.
I bet you can have a Gmail address called UrbanaPotholes@... Bill, I have a quick question. Oh, well, actually, I want to comment. I know that I provided this feedback a couple of years ago. I really appreciate the fact that the coal patch crews will tamp down their, the coal patch, particularly when it's, when it's in a bicycle route or in the bike path, and that's really important, so I appreciate that extra step that they take.
Other questions for Bill? Diane?
One more question. Is there anything the public can do as far as advocating for funds for Windsor Road? There's nobody who wants to see this move forward more than I do, so is, can they write to the Department of Transportation? Can we, what can people do?
I think at this point, you know, we want to let our state legislators, you know, know our concerns and needs out there is probably the biggest thing, but I think through the mayor's office, and, you know, we'll make that happen, but if there's contact or what have you, that will be important, particularly if we're looking at a state capital bill-
Yeah.
-that appears to be something that will be considered this year, and we would hope that we could try to seek funding in that regard.
True.
Yeah, we talked with the governor and the head of IDOT, and that's how we got the quarter of a million dollars to do the engineering study, and then I think that we could get money from a new capital bill if that passes, when it passes. It has to pass because there's so many roads that need fixing. So, that is our top priority.
Thank you, Bill. Tom Carino?
Good evening. Everyone should have received this month's economic development report. Would have provided this report last week, but we'll do it this week instead. Just a few items downtown. Work is complete on the renovation of Cake Design Development Project, which is 206, 208, and 210 West Main Street. Just some news that we received today. COLAB is a finalist for the Innovation Celebration Entrepreneurial Excellence Social Venture Award, so that's great. Good luck to them. Also, work is complete on Transitions Resale Store, and there was a ribbon cutting on January 10th for that project. Also, not in this report, but Champagne Cycle in Urbana, you may have read in the newspaper yesterday that they are moving forward at 110 South Ray Street. That is the former location of Flourish and CU Studio Share, so that's a great addition to downtown. On Philo Road, a permit has been issued for the remodeling of the former Piccadilly at 1508 East Colorado Avenue, and that's a business called Rainbow Restoration. That's a project where they will be doing some professional cleaning and restoration of furniture and things like that related to general contracting. Also, permit's been issued for remodeling of 1104 North Cunningham Avenue. That is the former Louis Dixie Kitchen. That is going to be a concept, that the property owner is going to be doing. The property owner is Martin Fuentes, the owner of Toro Loco, who used to occupy that location. He'll be doing a new restaurant concept there. Also, a lot of activity at Gregory Place. Renovation of Co-Fusion continues, renovation for Cafe Benny, and also work is continuing on Deer 72. Just a few more items. The sculpture in King Park is now installed, that piece by Preston Jackson. There is a variety of items related to that. There will be a celebration in January, and then a formal dedication in April, and council and the Public Arts Commission will be invited to those events. Also, the, related to public art, 2014 arts grants are available online, and the deadline to apply for those is January 17th, so this Friday, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Questions for Tom. Mike?
Hey, Tom. So, Rainbow Restoration, is that the same business that has a location right now just east off Cunningham on Perkins Road, across from Tatman's? There is a rainbow, it's like a franchise type of professional cleanup type of operation?
The folks involved, I know, are associated with TC Tatman Contracting, so I don't know about the location you're referring to, but I know the people involved are people associated with TC Tatman.
Okay, so then my question is, is this an additional location, or are they relocating?
I'm not positive.
Okay, could you maybe find that out-
Sure.
...and let me know?
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Other questions for Tom? Tom, do you have any estimate of when Co-Fusion, Cafe Benny, and the clothing store in Gregory Place will open up?
I can try to get that. I know they all started at different times, so I can try to get some projected openings for you.
Other questions for Tom? Okay, Dennis Roberts has a quick announcement.
Yeah, I just wanted to make an announcement public, that there will be a special meeting this Thursday night at 7:00 in this building, in the city council chamber, a meeting of the Urbana Tree Commission for the purpose of getting public input and reporting on the condition of a very large hackberry tree at the corner of Kohler Avenue and High Street that has been of interest to the community recently. There's been a newspaper article in the previous Saturday of the News Gazette. The community is interested in trying to support a positive conservation and rest, and conservation of the tree. Right now, the tree is slated for removal by the Public Works Department and the Arbor Division, and the community has approached me, and a few other people have come together to have this meeting with the Tree Commission to explore ways of possibly saving the tree using perhaps the best modern techniques of conservation. So, that's going to take place here in this building Thursday at 7:00. If you are interested in preserving the grand trees of our community, this particular one may be the largest tree by height, width, and girth in the city, and we were told that it may actually be the tallest hackberry tree in the state, so we're going to try to get some more information about it. Hopefully, we can save it and preserve it rather than have it completely removed, so that discussion will be taking place very soon here, and you're invited to come.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, December 9th, 2013. Libby? You do have a report.
I just wanted to announce that there are a number of events related to the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday coming up, and the website that lists these is inclusiveillinois.illinois.edu. And the first event is the one that the City of Urbana is involved in organizing, the 13th Annual Countywide MLK Junior Celebration from 4:30 to 6:00 at Hilton Garden Inn. That's this Friday, January 17th, and there's a youth event that I've been working on for the holiday itself, and we'll have an afternoon of service, and that's at the Urbana Civic Center, and the focus will be for high school students. And just probably a dozen different events, if you want to go to the website, a couple different events at Cranert, prayer breakfast, just a great number of opportunities for people, so.
Questions for Libby? Thank you. Okay, now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 9th committee meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Carol. Any corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so approved. Public input, we have a couple right off the, well, Carletta, you're next.
Thank you. This is Carletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookings Drive in Urbana. And before I start, if I could just preface, that there's, sometimes there's a difference between questions and complaints and concerns. Those are three separate things, and sometimes when people ask questions, it's considered a complaint by those receiving it, so hopefully, none of these seem like complaints. They are concerns and also questions. I'll come back to, I did speak with Mr. Gray before the meeting, but I do have a few questions in light of what he had mentioned earlier. But one, point number one, money for the continuing lawsuit that's pending against the Urbana, City of Urbana, there's been much talk in letters to the editor about the waste of money to Urbana taxpayers for this accounting supervisor lawsuit. Is there more than the Urbana citizens and a few city council members willing to speak up saying that this lawsuit is unnecessary? How much more money will be spent before it's final? And it's obvious who the players are in this mess, is what I have, because I, for lack of a better word, maybe take the money from those that have created the lawsuit to cover the cost of litigations, since they won't admit what they've done wrong. Now, do the attorneys have to come from somewhere else? Why are they never here locally? I know we have staff, staff attorneys on, or attorneys on staff, but we're always going out of the area, and I'm sure we have attorneys that can be paid here. You don't have to put up with hotel and all of that, because they do live in the area. The subject of alcohol, I noticed that there's quite a few liquor license discussions tonight, or ordinances tonight. Will someone be able to explain when they come up if there are requests for liquor license that were turned down because of area resident protest in the past? I've kind of gone through some of them, and not exactly sure. One of them, I believe, is one from a previous request, but just want to get some clarity on that. Back to January 24th, Tom, he left. Tom Carino, the celebration for the sculpture, is that still for January 24th, and if so, is there a time? I don't know if you can answer that now, if I need to keep going, or... That was the last date that I had, so just want to make sure that's clear. And I know there's two separate things.
There is, there is going to be an educational program that Friday, and that will be at King School, but that is not for the general public. The sculpture dedication-
Is in April.
-is going to be in April.
Okay.
Yeah, but there's a smaller event in the community, just with the schoolchildren at King School.
Okay, all righty. Thank you, and I hope the listening audience heard that. Don't barge in on King School on Friday, the 24th. And then for Mr. Bill Gray, I noticed you said that on Saturday, you might have to look at Saturday for overtime for some of your employees. I know that one of the employees for the city has some public service duties, and I don't know if they're covered under insurance. Might that be an option for them to give, that's not an option? Okay, that was one of my questions, maybe to just cut down on some of the overtime. That was a thought, maybe hold the sign or put the things down. Okay, thank you, that's clear. And then, one of the other things, I do thank you, because as Carol and I think someone else mentioned, the streets were clear very quick, I mean, the main streets in the snows, and I know that it was not very easy to do, but as far as the potholes, yes. Like Mr. Jacobson, maybe we can have a number, pothole number, or pothole website or something, so that people know what streets to kind of steer clear of, so, but I think that's it. And again, my last final is, we can no longer stand behind, and I quote, because I've heard it over and over for the last couple of years as I've sat here at the Urbana City Council meetings, and I quote, "We are Urbana," because some people are really not sure what they're saying to future business and resident prospects. So, my question is, what does that really mean? We are Urbana.
You have one minute, Ms. Donaldson.
I'm done. Thank you.
Carletta, I was going to say is that I know that Public Works and others within the city are looking at a, an app for reporting stuff, so hopefully, by this time next year, we'll have that in place.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, everybody else wants to, there are a couple people here who, let me sort through them here, some who want to speak at the time and, or just want to address, or just want their positions known. The one item that's not related to anything else on the agenda is from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. They do not choose to address the committee, but ask that, that their concern be expressed. "We're concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems." And then I'll summarize the rest here once we get into the agenda. Next up is ordinance number 2013, 12106, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the City of Urbana, 2911 East Anthony Drive. And Libby, are you going to do a staff report on this? Yeah, so we'll start with staff report, and then we'll do public input on this.
This is regarding the annexation petition for 2911 East Anthony Drive, as well as a larger issue of the annexation agreement for Wildberry Acres. There was not enough background information, and this was before council previously, so I've been able to go back and research some of the background on the agreement, which I believe is important in your decision regarding the one property that you'll consider this evening, and I provided this additional information in the memorandum. So, apologize that this information wasn't available previously. Just some things to highlight, I do think it's important in the background, the agreement was entered into in 1994, and it turns out that that was actually following the approval of the subdivision. So, it was not tied to the subdivision. It was a voluntarily entered into agreement, and it was also not tied to the provision of sanitary sewers. I looked at the memoranda that were prepared at that time, and some of the other materials, and the developers had agreed to the annexation agreement even though they would not be connecting to a sanitary sewer, and the city council approved the annexation agreement on the basis of the policies that were in effect at that time, specifically policies contained in the 1982 Comprehensive Plan, the 1993 Extraterritorial Jurisdictional Area Plan, as well as a 1992 Intergovernmental Agreement with the Sanitary District, City of Champagne, Village of Savoy. So, all of these documents were recited in this annexation agreement at the time, and have been carried forward in our currently existing Comprehensive Plan, which replaced that '82 plan, as well as the Extraterritorial Jurisdictional Plan. So, that's some additional background. I think we mentioned in the staff report previously how the annexation agreement is very specific about the future obligation to annex by the property owners, and provides provisions to ensure that those documents were carried forward in sales contracts and properly recorded. So, that was a large part of the annexation agreement. Another thing that maybe wasn't clear last time, or we've had additional information, is currently our latest analysis by our surveyor and our legal division is that, okay, there is six lots in the subdivision. All of the lots are eligible for annexation now, so it's not like you need one, and then the others will come in. Under the latest case law and the latest laws that pertain to this, they're all actually eligible. So, of the six, there have been three cases filed to force the petition, and three are pending, and I know that legal division is hoping to get some further direction this evening on that. And the discussion, there's just more background on these older policies, and really, since that time, we have, and I think I tried to describe this a little bit last time, we have a pretty extensive procedure manual that we've used that guide our preparation of the annexation agreements, and our preparation of the noticing, and all the follow-up that happens with the petitions. So, it's been our matter of business that the city's pursued now for over two decades, so don't know if that was really described previously. Also, just provide a little more update on the current Comprehensive Plan that does have policies that encourage compact contiguous growth through the mechanism of annexation agreements. And I think I provided a link to one of the maps in the Capital Improvement Plan, where you can see some of these more recent annexations, and how important they are to the territory of the city. And I mentioned last time, and here again, several of the subdivisions where there was a difficult decision that the council had to follow up with an annexation agreement, and even in light of property owner protests. So, you know, very large areas of the city, including Berenger Commons, Country Squire, portions of Timber Hills, Somerset subdivision was one of our more recent ones, as well as portions of Scottswood. Another piece that wasn't provided at your last discussion was the specifics on the fiscal impacts, because not only are we talking about some of the policies that pertain here, but also some of the fiscal effects, and how it affects not just the City of Urbana, but the other, some other taxing bodies, including Cunningham Township, for which the council also serves as board. So, this totals up, and we were giving guestimates, I think, last time, but this provides you, you know, very specific numbers for the City of Urbana. The annual increase for following the annexation agreement on the six lots would be 3,605, and then for Cunningham Township, per year, 576. So, those combined would be the impact on the City of Urbana itself and its responsibilities. Let's see, and then also would be important to note the impact on the Urbana Park District, which would be $2,691 per year. The options, just moving on to options, there was a lot of discussion last time about different things that could be done, and just breaking those down. The council can go ahead and approve the petition, as well as proceed with the legal actions necessary to enforce the annexation agreement. Council can deny the petition and drop the further enforcement, and there were some different suggestions about negotiating or changing the agreement. We, of course, done additional research internally, had additional discussion, and the city staff, and this would include administration, community development, Public Works, legal, fire, all the different divisions that have been involved, continue to recommend that the council adopt the attached ordinance, and to, and continue to enforce the ordinance adopting the annexation agreement, so that, that remains the city's staff recommendation. We make this recommendation because it's consistent with the city's longstanding plans and policies, and with its efforts on other after-the-effect residential annexations. The agreement was entered into explicitly without reliance on the provision of sanitary sewer service, and it is clear- sewer service, and it is clear in the agreement that the obligation to annex shall succeed to subsequent property owners. We also believe that there is a fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers and to the other affected units of government to follow the ordinance and its policies. Oh, I'm sorry, just, just finishing up. Um, there, in terms of renegotiating, in terms of the agreement to rebate a portion of the tax bill, this is an approach that we would only use, only recommend to use in cases where there hasn't been development. So you would be rebated your portion of the city taxes, um, until such time as there's development, but this has already been developed. Then there was a suggestion, renegotiate the agreement until sewer service, or some other service can be provided, and we do, staff does not recommend that, because the lack of the sewers was known at the time of the agreement, and it would be very difficult at this point to have all property owners agree to the extension of the service, because there would actually be, um, a requirement for the individual service, so there would be additional costs associated. And just in terms of practical difficulties of the renegotiation in this particular case that are mentioned here as well. So, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Questions for Libby, and then we'll take public input. Seeing none, we'll move to public input. I have, uh, three people who do not wish to speak but are in opposition, Sandra Hamilton, Warren Lowry, and Randy Gustafson. And then we have two people who wish to speak, Mary Lowry. And you've got five minutes.
I'm Mary Lowry. I live at 3009 East Anthony, so a couple doors down from Sandy. So, um, after the last meeting, at the last meeting, it kind of suggested that it would be so difficult to get us all to agree to a different sort of, um, extension of the annexation agreement, but actually, four of the six of us were here, and we talked to the other two that evening, and something like delaying the annexation for 10 years or until some services would be coming to us was agreeable to everyone, um, to all six of the owners. Uh, I emailed that to the city attorney, but he emailed back that he couldn't negotiate. So, we didn't, everyone would've said they would agree to that, but how do we document it? How do we put it into, into effect? Now, the document that you all just talked about, the, um, the memorandum from the planning division just came on Saturday, so I haven't talked to anyone, um, since then, but five out of six of us are here about, um, you know, it's the continuous for today, but I did wanna kinda go through this, and so this is the staff's opinion, and I just wanted to add sort of what we knew, or what, what I know, or what I would thought about this. Um, and I do wanna say that I know, starting on the bottom of page one where, um, I'm sorry, what's her name? Libby? Had talked about this, that, that it was agreed that the sewer, um, it says Bucksons agreed to sign annexed, great, annexation agreement, even though they would not be connected to the sanitary sewer. Well, that's all well and fine, but that's not in the annexation agreement, and it's not in the covenants that I signed when I agreed to be annexed and to sign the annexation agreement. So if they agreed to that, it was not documented anywhere that a coming landowner buying the property could actually know that. So, that was the first we've ever heard of that. So it's not in the covenants, and it's not in the agreement. Um, also, a little bit further down, um, paragraph that starts according to the annexation agreement, um, the, let's see, it says, "Land is, um, further obligated to annex that said tract." Well, it's not in the annexation agreement, but in the covenants that came with my house, which is what I signed, um, it says, and I won't read the whole paragraph about annexation, but it says, "The owners and developers of this subdivision sign annexation agreement with the city of Urbana, stating that all lot owners will agree to join in and consent to any petition for annexation of their lot within 30 days of the property becoming contiguous with the city of Urbana limits." And so when did it become contiguous? 2003? When did you know when the borders were?
That's one of the, um, difficulties with the case. It wasn't apparently contiguous until, we're like, 2011, when we sent the letter.
So there was some legal stuff that went on about whether or not it was contiguous, but it doesn't matter. In 2003, we didn't know with Berenger Commons. In 2011, we didn't know, so none of us knew to do it. We weren't asked to petition within 30 days, and we didn't do it. And so, as far as we were concerned, nothing was happening, and there was no, nothing was going on. So I just wanted to say that, you know, as far as what we knew about what we signed, I saw, I know some of the landowners didn't get this, but I did. So that was what I was working under. Also, I went and looked at the, so down at the bottom of page two, under the discussion, it was talking about sort of all the other things that had been going on. But I know at the last meeting, someone mentioned that, um, currently you don't annex, uh, properties when they're not getting access to sewer and water, and so I went and looked at the subdivision, um, document that's on the webpage, and it was approved in 1988, and it says, "No development shall be approved unless the developer provides for and guarantees construction of sanitary water and sewer adequate to serve the needs of the developer's entire development."
You have one minute, Ms. Lowry.
So that's in there. That wasn't adhered to, even though it was prior to the agreement being signed in 1994. Um, the, um, under fiscal impacts, it talks about the, um, the other taxing bodies, and so I will say that one of them that is omitted here is that we actually are in the CU sanitary district, and we are being taxed by them, even though apparently there was never any intention of giving us sanitary sewer. Um, I'd also like to note that I have paid for the library and the park district, and in addition to not just the fees, but the out-of-district fees, so you haven't lost this much, because I've paid you for several years while my kids were in school. Um, there was some, some, uh, talk here about the, that the city had to delay the annexation because of, um, trying to figure out where the lines were and everything, but honestly, if we'd, if we'd had a chance to be annexed back when my kids were actually using the library and the park district and those things, then we'd be getting something, and I would be happy to do it. Um, but at the current state-
I'd move for an extension of time. Yeah, I'll second that. Are you close?
I mean, if we had been, had the chance to do it back then, when we were going to get something, that would be fine. It also talked somewhere, and I can't find where it was right now, but about, um, you know, sometimes landowners don't wanna do this, they're, they're opposed to, it's under recommendations, it says, "Property owners are not in favor of increases in property taxes," and are in opposition. But it's not so much that we're in fa, not wanting to get the taxes, it's that we're not getting anything for the taxes. That, I think that's the whole point that we were talking about before, we're not getting the water, we're not getting the sewer. Apparently, it was never intended that we were ever going to. Let's see. And I think the other thing is, um, I did look too at the, again, at the properties where we are, and there aren't any, once we're annexed, the city won't have the ability to annex anything next to us, because nothing adjoining us, um, has annexation agreements on it. And I also know there was a, another subdivision that's only a mile down the road from us that just currently got re-tracked, and that one also has no annexation agreement. So it seems like if the city really wants to grow out, they'd be consistent with the annexation agreements, um, but that one's not gonna have one either. So again, you're, they're gonna have another subdivision that, that doesn't have an annexation agreement with it. So, um, I think that's all, but I just wanted to, to sort of tell you about a few things that I read in here that, that I wanted to say something about, or that I knew, other information, or other things that weren't stated in here that I wanted you to know, so.
Questions for Mary. Thank you. Next up is Mason Armstrong.
I'm Mason Armstrong. I live at 3005 East Anthony in Wildberry subdivision. I didn't do as much homework as Mary did. She did a little more in-depth than I did, but, uh, we're, I, we're not out here to stop the city from growing. We, we don't have any problems with the city growing. We, I'm the youngest one in the neighborhood. I've only been there five years. We've come to kinda have a way that we are out there. It's, last time, it was mentioned, we would benefit by having city fire department. Talked to my insurance agent, $20 a year is what I would save on my insurance if I had city fire department. In the last snow we had, Sunday, township was out plowing. City did a good job too, but township had our road. I'm one of the unfortunate ones that had to be at work about 6:30 in the morning Monday. I didn't have a choice. Township had the road plowed. I'm just kinda used to having some services out here that I don't, not sure that the city's gonna provide. I'd be willing to give you a chance, try, no problem, but then we can't go back if we don't like it. It's kinda hard once we're annexed in. We have a cornfield right across the street from my house. I like to take my grandkids out there and play in the cornfield, do, told you we like to have fires in that neighborhood. Set around a bonfire. We get in the city, we're not gonna be able to do this. We have privileges. It was also mentioned that this, we benefit by being to the city. I'm sorry, but I think the city benefits with us being there that close, because I buy my groceries in Urbana, I buy my gas in Urbana, I buy everything in Urbana. So, you're still getting most of my tax dollars and my benefits from me living there. What are you losing, except for, according to your paper, $700 a year? If this house that I'm living in is annexed into the city, and it was on the market, I wouldn't buy it. Simple fact that I have a five-bedroom house, one car attached, bath and a half over by Kirby and Madison, Champaign, two blocks from a school, water, sewer, one block from an MTD stop. Taxes on that house are lower than what this is gonna be. This is a three-bedroom house, two bath, two car. I wouldn't live there. It wouldn't be a benefit. I have a big yard, but that's why I bought it. I got some benefits. If the city would just give us somebody to talk to, we, like Mary said, you have five out of six owners here. We're not wanting to stop you from growing, but we kinda got used to living out here, doing our thing, and we would like, what is city ag? It's not on your website, it's nowhere. There's nothing that says what city ag is. I would like to know. We would like to have somebody to contact. I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney, last time I was talking up here, I told you I would like to negotiate, but I understand after a while, you can't. We have to negotiate with somebody from staff or something like that, because you have to represent the city, so I'm sorry about that. But, come on. We're not trying to stop you from growing. I see other neighborhoods that are surrounded by city, Scottswood, Carroll, a couple other ones. They have bus, they have water, they have, we can't even hook up in my house to water, because there's no water. Sanitation, I understand. Running under the interstate, that's costly. Future growth, bring it in from the north. You have subdivisions and everything up there. We're not trying to stop you from growing, but kinda look at our point of view, please, because we're not trying to stop you. But let us have something, or give us some input to where we're gonna have a, at least feel good about it. I mean, right now, I've stayed out of politics, except for when it's time to vote, and I've been in front of y'all twice now. That's, and reading. I hate studying, like I say, Mary did more research than I did. But, uh, we would like to feel like we get something out of this, instead of, we're gonna raise your taxes, and you get the fire, you get the road, and library and everything else, like Mary said. My kids are all grown. I haven't been to a library forever, so that's, that's not doing me. But I understand there's other kids. We have to, you have to pay for services, and it's spread out amongst, amongst, bunch of people.
You have one minute, Mr. Armstrong.
Yeah, I'm pretty much done. I, I appreciate y'all. We're not trying to stop you, but at least talk to us. Make us feel human. Don't just make us feel like a city that's overrunning us and saying, "This was an agreement made 20 years ago, you have to stick to it." It was even mentioned that you, as a board council, you're not stuck to what a council said 20 years ago. Why are we stuck with an agreement that we don't like? Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Armstrong? Okay, thank you. What is the committee's pleasure?
Yes, um, oh, it's never a very, very easy thing to, uh, work with, uh, a community that, um, has a very free spirit and, uh, enjoys the, um, lifestyle of really, with this kind of like a corner of rural Urbana. Uh, I know I've gone down that, that street, there was, uh, one of the individuals who owned one of the houses, and I can't remember, um, now which one it was, runs a, a small motor repair shop, yeah, okay, gentleman. I had my, my, uh, lawnmower fixed there once or twice, because, uh, needed some work on it, it seemed like real handy. And, uh, I was a little bit surprised, it was, you know, a nice, it was a nice subdivision, it has nice homes in it, it looks like a suburban subdivision, and I was sort of interested that it was outside of the, uh, city limits. But then I also have a friend who lives on, um, North High Cross Road for many years, and, uh, I know they have received bus service, because, um, at High Cross and Airport, there is actually a bus route that comes right by their house. Uh, they have a horse yard, they did, they've moved now since then. Um, they were not in the city either, but they did receive those kinds of services out in the hinterlands of, um, northern Urbana. So, um, it's difficult to, um, kinda balance fairness and perceived fairness, I guess. We've had other communities come, and other individuals from different, um, subdivision developments who've come to have the same complaint. Um, most recently, in my memory, were, uh, several houses in the Scottswood area that were finally enclosed, and we had a very, um, uh, vocal person who came and said that they really just didn't wanna be in the city, and there were various reasons, very similar to some of yours. Um, and that was, um, resolved, that they did come to the city, because they, uh, also were, um, surrounded by the city, and they, they, uh, were annexed. And there were, we've also recently annexed people in Somerset, out on North Airport Road, there's been development, new development out there, so that's different than your community, which was developed quite a few years ago in comparison. That development occurred, and the many people who purchased lots in that neighborhood also were subjected to the pre-agreed, um, annexation agreement that the, the developer of the entire subdivision had signed with the city. So, um, those people are mostly now in the city, or will eventually become in, uh, members of the city community as well. We do have plans to improve Airport Road and make it more safe. We've done, uh, we're looking at grading and using, using our services combined with, um, the township services to, um, make, uh, one of the hills on that road more safe for the people who live out there, to widen the, um, the sides of the road so that there's, uh, better clearances. And we're, we've talked about extending a joint-use path and bicycle route and pedestrian route north of, north of the expressway and along High Cross in the future. So there are, there are gonna be amenities that are coming to the northern suburbs of Urbana. So, uh, this, this agreement, when you, when you have a, a development that's already really now established over the years, and, um, and there's been a pre-agreement for annexation, it's rather like having a mortgage with a, a balloon payment, and after a certain amount of time, the larger, the larger fee is called. And I guess, I guess when it comes to annexations, this similar kind of activity occurs when the contiguity of the property meets the requirements for annexation. So, it's never a pleasant experience, but the city is pretty much obligated to ask that the agreements that are made with the city, no matter when they were made, be honored. And, uh, I guess that, while it may not seem the most, uh, favorable to, to your community... And, uh, I guess that, while it may not seem the most favorable to your community, I think that if we began to, to start changing the, the, uh, the playing field for, um, annexation, it would actually be unfair to those who preceded you. And it would set up new conditions, which I think every single annexation in the future would then be forced to deal with. There'd be all kinds of, um, levels of negotiation and bargaining, which, um, would just make the, would, would make the experience of enlarging the city's, um, exterior and its, its land base, its tax base, its community, its school, school base, so much more complicated. So, I think the small, the, the most fair thing to do would be to say, "Well, we welcome you into the city. We hope that the new amenities that are being planned for you in the community in the future will please you and your children." And, um, that an agreement made in the past, you know, needs to be honored.
I, I guess I'm gonna follow Dennis in terms of being sympathetic to your concerns, but I'm not gonna vote the way you're asking us to. I, I feel bad about that. You're, you're clearly, uh, good, solid citizens. Uh, one thing you said I don't believe is correct. I do believe you can still have a bonfire in your backyard. If that's not true, uh, I have occasionally broken the law, and so has my neighbor. Have I? Oh, okay. Well, maybe we oughta, maybe we oughta revisit that, that ordinance.
You, you can have a bonfire as long as you're cooking something or grilling something. So, if you have a package of marshmallows at hand, you're totally legal.
And it can't be smoke that disturbs the neighbor. Okay. So, I may not have been breaking the law. I think we were roasting marshmallows. The, uh, uh, please, Urbana Public Television. Yes, we were roasting marshmallows. So, the, um, you know, I, I, your, your, yeah, your taxes are gonna go up, um, somewhat. The, um... You are, for whatever it's worth to you, uh, you are going to get, I believe, uh, better fire protection. I, I wish, I wish that we had brought you in when your kids were in school. You might actually like their Urbana Public Library anyway. I hope you'll, I hope you'll give it a try. We, I think the thing that's, that is really overwhelming to me on this issue and the thing that's, that's, that's tipping me over is that I do believe we have, uh, you know, we as council have an obligation to the city as a whole to, um, uh, to, to provide for the, the orderly expansion of the city as it's warranted, uh, by the geography and the economics. And, uh, and I think we, I think we have that responsibility to, to all the citizens of Urbana to do that. And, and that's the overwhelming reason that I'm going to, I intend to vote, um, as I have. I hope that if there's anything, well, assuming that the resolution passes, and I, I don't know that because we've been obeying the Open Meetings Act, so I have no idea how other people are gonna vote. But, uh, the, um, but if, if we do bring you into the city, I hope that you will feel free to hold us accountable for anything that we do that you don't like or don't do that you think we oughta do. And, and, uh, and we will listen.
Carol.
I wanted to ask a couple of process questions from the time that we met three weeks ago or so on this issue. As I left that council meeting, we, of course, there was a recommendation for tax abatement, which I didn't agree with that. Um, and you spoke to that in this document. But there was also a request, and I think from the council's agreement standpoint, to make an effort to meet with those families. And in this statement, it doesn't sound like that was made from our side. Is, is that what I'm reading? Like, the lack of, um, that we didn't think is, it's hard to conceive that a process of renegotiation would go smoothly with all the proper owners. Did we just not try to do that as requested by the council?
I think there were a lot of different options discussed. And my understanding was to bring it back with, with the options. And there was some communication. I think Jim Simon sent an update. But no, we did not try to have a meeting. I, I think there were so many questions that weren't answered in background that wasn't provided that we wanted to do that today. And, of course, I wrote this memo before, knowing that the property owners have met amongst themselves. And so, that's, that's new information. But we're just trying to provide additional information back on committee, as much information, um, back in front of you as possible. But, uh, no other action other than that.
And then, I just wanted to go back, 'cause I think there was also a question about, even though I understand what you expressed here tonight and even three weeks ago, that there was no provision, um, of, of services necessary to do the annexation at the time of the agreement. I think that there was some, some desire on the council's part to look into that further. And I just don't have enough information. Is it your recommendation, basically from what you've written here, that based on the fact that there was no prior requirement, that you don't feel that there's any more that need to be provided in relationship to services prior to annexation?
Well, I think that was some of the background that was missing. You know, what, what was the understanding then? So, that was new. And then practically speaking, we spent a little bit of time, you know, looking at the utility maps and speaking with Bill Gray on what would the practicalities be of providing the sanitary sewer. There's not a lot of information on that, but we did add some information that it'd be, um, quite a distance and it'd be quite an undertaking just for this development. Extremely expensive. Maybe someday in the future, there's sewer that's closer, but that would be dependent on other development based on other experience when sewers become available on areas that didn't have them previously. And there's an opportunity to tap into the municipal sewer. Even then, it's hard because it costs a little bit extra to actually tap in. So, even that can be difficult. So, there's not a lot of explanation about that, but that's, that's part of what the discussion internally was.
Bill.
Um, yeah, last time, I think I was mostly concerned about a couple of things. One was, um, potential lack of notice or, or lack of knowledge whether, whether you were, knew whether you'd be annexed or not. And the other thing would be, um, potential encouragement of urban sprawl, which I would be opposed to. But I think actually not annexing would probably tend to encourage sprawl more than annexing because if you don't annex, then more people are gonna build just outside the city so they don't have to pay the taxes. And that would encourage sprawl. As far as notification, I did go and found the same document that you read, the, um, Neighborhood Covenants. I found that at the county recorder's office. It took, I took, uh, the property ID number in, and within five minutes, they were able to find the microfilm and print it out for me, although their microfilm printer's not very good. I could read it. So, even though, you probably aren't expected to do that when you go buy a house, probably your real estate agent or your lawyer or somebody should have done it. And, and I think most of you probably did have it provided. I think the only other thing I'd, I'd mention is that we tend to think of cities as providing services as far as fire and, and police and library goes. But cities also provide infrastructure. And that infrastructure provides jobs. It provides a ready market. People that, um, will come out and get their lawnmowers repaired. So, just by having that proximity to a city, people do benefit. And I, I don't think it's, uh, out of order to, to follow the annexation agreement.
Dennis.
I've got, I've just got a question. Libby, um, these people have, um, they don't have sewer systems. They have, uh, the, no, I forgot the name of it. What, the drainage fields. Septics, septic lines. And, um, uh, when I was a kid, I had one too in my house at first. We had a subdivision that was made like that. And eventually we became into the city and we got some city water and we got some other things. We got sewer lines. Um, that was in Detroit area. The, uh, the city probably has what, uh, it, to be within the city limits, you don't, you're not required to have a sewer line, are you? You can have septic fields. Are we often?
The subdivision ordinance requires that you hook into the municipal sewer if it's within two hundred feet.
And, and that's for new construction? Or is that retroactive to other parts of the city?
I think either case. Is it, this would be a Bill Gray question, maybe? Brad knows about this stuff.
Not your area.
Brad will correct me if I misspeak. But in our subdivision ordinance, depending on the number of lots in a subdivision, that would trigger a requirement to extend a public sanitary sewer to a subdivision. For this size lot subdivision, correct, I believe it's two hundred feet. So, if there was a public sewer within two hundred feet of the subdivision, the subdivider would have had to, been required to extend it. With respect to, um, this situation, if a public sewer was, uh, within the realm of the lot and their, their septic field went bad, they would be required, the, the public health department would require them to tie into the public sewer. But as long as there's no public sewer on the Anthony Drive Street per se, they would still have to fix their private sewer system, their septic system, and continue to do that every so often. So, I will say that as part of the, since everyone pays a sewer benefit tax, if there is a lot or lots in the city that do not have a public sewer available to them, we prioritize those and do extend the public sewer to access those lots. So, um, in fact, Brad's been in charge of probably a half dozen projects over the last six, ten years. There was one, it's real clear in my mind, believe it or not, in the vicinity of Five Hundred and Washington Street, I think there was some lack of good access. We had to extend a public sewer to a few lots there. So, once in a while, you run across, um, an area, particularly if it was recently annexed, that may not be served. We will extend our sewer to eventually capture them. But as Libby identified, admittedly, this would be a bit more complicated because we're talking about going underneath Interstate seventy-four. That's a very expensive, boring, jacking, boring operation to get, get there. But, um, I don't know if I answered the question, but that's...
And, and Bill, if I could ask, so is it possible, um, is it feasible or possible, or has it ever been done, that a sewer line would be extended across, like the highway? We could, because that's quite an impediment. Overhead or attached to a crossing bridge or something like that?
No, um, overhead would not work.
Would not work. All right, just checking. So, all right.
I'm just thinking of birds flying.
Uh, Mike, were you, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. First of Libby, I'm sorry I didn't have this question earlier, 'cause I didn't have the document in front of me. But, uh, as a resident in Behringer Commons, I was aware of the marketing materials that Ivan Richardson and his company, uh, have, uh, made available to all potential home buyers as well as lot buyers. And I, I just needed to pull that up. I didn't have it up in front of me at the time. But i- in terms of Behringer, uh, they, they marketed, "New homes get all the amenities of city services, but pay only county real estate taxes." Exclamation point, okay? Uh, "The city of Urbana will rebate the city portion of the real estate taxes for the next seven years exclusively at Behringer Commons." So, this notion that there's, I, I mean, maybe I'm just looking at this wrong. Maybe, maybe I'm missing something here. If I am, please let me know. But I think the city has taken a position, at least in this one case, of, in an effort to at least sell lots or to sell homes, we will rebate taxes for a portion of years. Is it a great stretch to say, gee, twenty years ago, we thought the north side of I-74 would be more developed than it is today? But that's just not the case. And are we truly abandoning, um, or somehow hobbling the city's ability to grow compactly and continuously by just merely extending this agreement for a few years? I mean, and, and to say the city has no leverage, I will tell you, uh, as an advocate for these folks, I'll be the first one to vote to annex them in if they don't agree to an extension. I don't, I don't think we'd, I think it's a gross misstatement, or gross misjudgment to say that the city has no leverage at this point. I think the council, frankly, the council may be prepared to vote this way this evening. At least the majority of us. But I would think that there is some practical accommodation here that can still be made without compromising the city's overall plan. Rebates have been negotiated, whether that is upfront or, you know, after the fact. I don't see the difference, frankly. And, and I just, I still just really struggle with, um, us doing this for six homes on one side of one street, um, in a still fairly rural area. When, if we just looked at this and were a little bit more compassionate about it and not worried about the fiscal impact, which frankly, that's an opportunity cost. None of these taxing districts are enjoying that revenue today, okay? It's money that's just not, they're not realizing that they would otherwise realize, okay? So, I, I think, I think the, I, I think there is no, frankly, no fiscal impact. It's money we would have if we do this. It's not money lost, okay? So, to me, I just think we oughta look at this, uh, yeah, and I noticed I started by asking a question and then launching into all this. But, so please just correct me if I'm wrong about the Behringer thing.
On the, Behringer was a unique situation. And I probably, we need to go back and, and see what was it about that, that they had a special, unique deal on the annexation? It was so unique that when we did Build Urbana in, um, mid-two thousands, that their deal superseded, their rebate deal superseded. So, um, there, there was, and it was upfront as part of the development. That, that was a deal with, um, with Behringer.
Was it only if someone would buy a lot and build a house? Or was it for someone who bought a house that was already constructed and still within the seven-year timeframe?
I think it transfers, the seven years transfers, um, as does a Build Urbana.
Is that available still today? If someone built a house in Behringer, they're gonna get seven years of rebates?
Their, their deal still supersedes a Build Urbana. And Build Urbana is now sunsetted. But that, again, was to encourage new construction. And that was something that the city adopted in the mid-two thousands. It did for several years. It really bumped up our new housing starts. The rebate was for the difference in the overall tax rate between Urbana and Champagne.
Well, I would just, um, implore the members of the council to think long and hard about what we're doing here. And I truly believe that we can strike a balance between promoting compact growth in an orderly fashion and the fiscal realities of these folks with regard to... This isn't, this may be a minimal amount of property tax revenue for the city, but it is significant for them. This is a significant... This is a significant tax increase. And especially in these times, I think we need to think long and hard about these types of things and try to strike a balance, and I would suggest that we defer this and give the staff guidance to try to negotiate an extension of this deal so that everyone involved, their purposes are served. The city ultimately can annex the property, hoping, in the hope that there is more property contiguous to this property in the future that can also be annexed into the city. And at the same time, these folks are not staring down the barrel of a, of a 10 or 15 percent increase in their property taxes. Eric?
So, let me ask procedurally, would it be feasible for us to move on the annexation, but in a separate, but obviously related item, provide a rebate of at least the city of Urbana increase in their taxes for a few years in a way that would be parallel to the Behringer Commons agreement?
I think that would probably need an ordinance, the second action would need an ordinance.
Right, yeah, so we'd need two ordinances, we'd need one for annexation and a separate ordinance, I assume, for rebate on those properties?
Well, you can draft in one ordinance what you want to do, but there are problems with it. First of all, the city is under a statute of limitations to either enforce the annexation agreement as written, and any action other than people agreeing to annex would have to be filed between now and, I don't know, sometime in March or April, I forget the exact date. These actions can't be filed overnight. It would tax legal, particularly Kurt, or he just couldn't do it. We have three suits filed, we have served one individual, this particular individual relating to this particular parcel. We have attempted to serve one more, and I have directed Kurt on the third suit to refrain from serving the other side until we know it's going to happen, so we have three other suits. If you were to, let's say, and I'm not recommending what you do unless somebody asks me, but if you reach an agreement with one property owner, you still have five other property owners with whom to deal. The best way of doing that, and again, I'm not recommending that in fact you do that, that's a policy decision, would be to have an agreement to which every one of the owners would agree. And if, if you couldn't, if, if it were the decision of the council, when it comes before the council, that if the homeowners can't agree to something to which the city would be willing to agree, then the annexation would be forced unless they just flat out agree to an annexation petition and all. But the city has to protect its rights under the annexation agreement as it is drawn until the council makes some kind of a decision on what it wants to do. Again, I am not recommending any particular position for you all to take because you haven't asked me that, and I don't think it would be within my province to recommend. I think it would be Libby's department to make her recommendation.
If I can just follow up, I, to be sure that what I'm talking about is clear, I guess what I'm suggesting is annex, do a clean annexation, but then consider separately a tax rebate, a temporary tax rebate for properties that we have annexed.
I understand that, but the problem you have with that is we would annex one property, and I guess we'd have to, that's all right.
What do you do with the?
An agreement would have to be reached with the other, all the property owners, but in the meantime, the city has to protect its rights. I mean, it's feasible, if that's the way you all want to go, whatever direction you give legal, as far as the legal side of it, will do.
So, I think this conversation, as it's developed, draws me back to my original question. When we met last December 9th, the motion that we made at that time, that was, was sanctified by Mr. Madigan at that time, was to explore other options for the staff, legal and community development to explore other options. And what we have here is a repeat of the conversation of December 9th with no additional options on the table except what we're now talking about again, that we talked about December 9th. In this case, I don't necessarily agree with the rebate, I guess, you know, but that could be explored, right? I think the, I also agree that the city should protect its, its right to annexation, but does that preclude an extension? So, unfortunately, we don't have, not you, legal, but we don't have as a council, the other, explore the other options pieces so that we can say, oh, well, you know, that really is not in our best interest, we should just simply annex as staff has recommended. But we don't have the other options to even kind of weigh, because what we have in this document was that staff didn't think it was a good time, or we didn't have enough people, or whatever the recommendation was, to not look at the other option piece and bring that before the council, which we need to feel that we're doing the right thing for the constituents and protecting the interests of the city at the same time. So I kind of feel a little torn between these right now.
Oh, Dennis?
Jim, I would like to ask your opinion as legal counsel to the city. You did raise some concerns in a memo about trying to break this down into dealing with, like, different individuals at different times, that there's, there's a time sequence that these annexations would probably be coming up, that they're not all at the same time. As I recall, you, you were very hesitant to support any kind of activity that would start negotiating individually with the landowners, so do you want to make a comment now?
Well, I basically stand on what I said at the last meeting and this meeting. I did provide the council, hopefully everyone got a copy, of a list of options. Now, one or two of them have surfaced into discussion here. The only recommendation that I will make to protect the city is to, as Councilman Ammons indicated, do that which is necessary to protect the city's rights. That means if we don't have an agreement, if that's the route you want, you all want to go by the date the statute of limitations has run, then the city, at least as to the three lots, have given up their rights to pursue the annexation agreement. So, if you decide to negotiate, whatever your options are, assuming, if you decide that, I would, the only recommendation I would make is that you negotiate with the property owners as a block and not separately, because then you're going to be treating each one disparately by negotiating separate agreements with separate terms and all. Now, that doesn't mean you can't negotiate, it doesn't mean you have to negotiate, that's up to you.
Mike?
Well, I think, first of all, in all fairness to Libby, I think her memo did outline some, some additional, you know, options and the reasons that the staff was not recommending those options, but I do agree, continue to agree with Carol, that I think, you know, we ought to explore additional options. One thing that I would like to throw out there for legal counsel's comment would be, is it possible to, for the city council to vote, approve an ordinance to effectuate the annexation with a delayed effective date, which in effect would, would say to the folks on, on East Anthony Drive, this ordinance for annexation will take effect unless we agree to perhaps an extension?
The problem you're considering is an ordinance which affects one particular parcel of property. We have an annexation agreement, we have a petition for annexation that has been signed, and that is what, that is the subject of the ordinance that you are discussing.
I understand that.
You have right now nothing regarding the other five parcels.
I understand that, but it's, is it, it is entirely possible that the process could play itself out with the remaining parcels well within the timeframe for the scenario that I'm suggesting? In other words, I understand what's before us tonight, but there are six parcels, and obviously, I think the city's position has been, let's play this out with one or two or three, and, and the rest will fall in line. I understand that. But I guess what I'm asking is, what I'm suggesting is, isn't it entirely possible to go ahead and file the paperwork for the remaining parcels, have the city council vote for an annexation ordinance with a delayed effective date, putting in motion the ability for the city to negotiate from a position of strength for some other down-the-road annexation agreement, as opposed to doing this within the timeframe of the original agreement?
The, to answer the question, if the city protects its interests by filing the remaining suits, once they're filed, and if you file them before the statute of limitations expire, then you have protected the city's rights. For a period of time, so long as the court believes there is some kind of progress, if that's your will as a council, the court will hold off, probably if everyone agrees, taking any action on the lawsuits. So you would buy some time to negotiate. But again, I think the first decision you're going to have to make is, what are you, what is your overall position? Do you want to negotiate, or do you want to enforce the agreement as written? And again, that's a decision that you all have to make, that's not mine.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I, I guess, just in following up on that, then, my, my strong suggestion continues to be that we pursue some kind of negotiated agreement with these folks that is amicable to all parties. And I, I think that is totally within the realm of possibility. You have five of the six property owners here this evening, they're just asking to be talked to, and I think it's incumbent upon us as a city council to at least engage them in a conversation. I understand there are legal proceedings going on here, so I'm not sure of all the intricacies of how that can happen, but smarter folks than me ought to be able to figure that out to where we can have a conversation with these folks, whether that's in a, if it has to be in a public forum, that's fine, if it doesn't, even better. So there can be candor on all parties' parts, but if it has to be a public hearing where these folks get a chance to actually sit with decision-makers of the city and hammer out an agreement, as opposed to this just back and forth and back and forth, and frankly, nothing positive really seeming to happen here, I think we ought to try to figure out how to effectuate that.
I think Carol, then Eric, then Dennis.
I appreciate Libby giving me her, her recommendations from you, because somehow I didn't get them in all of this paper we, we did get. Yeah, they were in the email, apparently, and so I must have left before I could print that out, but at any, I understand now that the, the options that I, yeah, we have talked about all of these options in this week as well as last week, and I just wanted to clarify, if we decided to, as Mr. Jacobson pointed out, to pass the annexation agreement with an option that Libby could look into the difference of the, the tax costs for some kind of rebating afterwards, how does that affect the annexation agreement, or does it?
I did not hear the full question. I have a cold and I'm having trouble hearing some things.
The last option under the conclusion in your, in your memo, just option D talks about annexation, and then there's a rebate possibility that could take place separate. Does that have any bearing at all on the annexation agreement if we move forward now, or do we have to change that to even do some kind of rebate?
I think you have to start out with, as I said before, protecting the city's rights under the annexation group. That doesn't mean you have to enforce it as written. Once six suits are on file and we beat the statute of limitations, then the city is free, or the council is free, to authorize somebody, me, whoever, to negotiate with the property owners as a group, or their attorney, or attorneys as a group, however, according to parameters you tell me to do. But as I've said over and over, the bottom line is, we have to do, you all have to give the legal division direction on what you want legal division to, to do vis-à-vis the pending suits, as well as the three suits. After that, it's, do we just go with the agreement or some variation?
Okay, Eric, then Dennis, then Diane.
I, I guess I just want to repeat my position on the, of what's before us. I, I think we, I, I favor passing it tonight. Is it on the floor, or do we need to make a motion?
There's no motion.
No motion yet.
Okay, well, I've got to move, we, I'm going to move, we, we, we pass this, or we-
Send it to council.
Send it to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by Eric, seconded by Diane, to send this to council with a recommendation for approval. Dennis, you're next, then Diane.
Well, I was going to make that motion, but I will just say that, that by doing this, we create a new precedent that hasn't really been done, I don't think, you know, in my memory, being on city council for eight years, and, you know, which is basically backpedaling to give benefit to a completed and, a built, a pre, already built and operating subdivision plan. So, I, I think it doesn't sound to me very, very promising for the future. If we make a precedent with this, we'll be looking at it every single time we annex any property that's not the city today, because who wouldn't want to ask for this?
Diane?
I pretty much agree. Normally, you look at governing and it's more of an art than a science, and, and you do want to have room for negotiation and flexibility and compromise, but there are a few areas that I believe we have to be completely consistent in, and one of those areas is in these annexation cases, especially when there's a signed agreement. It's not, this one in particular is kind of messy, and it's not what we typically see, but it was an agreement signed by a developer, and it's painful, but in order to be fair to all the property owners who've been annexed in the past, and to all the property owners who will face this in the future, I think we have to be absolutely consistent in, in how we do this and straightforward. So, the choices, we were given a lot of options, but I see two options. One is, we vote this ordinance down and essentially set the stage for giving up the opportunity to annex these properties, or we move forward. And I do not support negotiation, even though that's what you're, you know, you're, you're tempted to do and you want to do, and in your heart you want to do, but my mind is telling me we need to be very consistent in how we handle this case, because it sets a precedent for, for the future, and it also speaks to what we've done in the past. So, I will, I'll, I'll vote to approve or to send this ordinance to council.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Well, I just think it's a stretch for anyone to suggest that this somehow hobbles the city and its future agreements, or that it somehow is unfair to folks in the past or in the future. or in the future. What we're talking about are six homes on the south side of One Short Street. We're not talking about a subdivision like Somerset, or Barringer, or Stone Creek, or, or, you know, subdivisions with hundreds of homes, hundreds of lots. We're talking about six homes. We're talking about a very minor exception to what I will absolutely agree has been a long-held precedent of the city. But this is not in any way, shape, or form hobbling the city. It's not in any way, shape, or form being unfair to anyone. That's why we're here. We're here to make, we're here to make decisions that, sure, are based on past precedent, precedent, that's great, are based on future considerations, that's great. But we're also here to make decisions about when should we make a minor exception to the rule. And that's what this is. That's what this is. Deferring this for a period of time is a minor exception to a rule. So I'll be opposed to the motion, and I will, you know, just to be a stick in the mud, I'm going to move to defer it at the next meeting.
Can I just say something before you make your, my name is Randy Gusterson.
That's out of order, isn't it? Well, he, he did submit a, please, you have five minutes.
Randy Gusterson. I'm on the Wildberry Acres, 3001 East Anthony. I, I can speak for myself and as well as the neighbors, we'd be more than happy to negotiate and, and sign an extension, you know. There's no problem. We don't want to fight with the city. And let me just read real quick what I got here. On November 14th, a deputy delivered a summons to my house, and I had 30 days to respond. I did respond on December 13th to say no and to say why on the annexation, which cost me $142 of a filing fee to the clerk of the circuit court. Then four days later, someone from the courthouse delivered another summons to my house on December 17th. And it's two summons, and they both have the same wordings, and both summons has my ex-wife's name on them. And, but, and her name has been taken off the deed of the house. I just want to say that, you know, and what do I do? I'm at, it seems like, you know, the last meeting, you guys were all for us, and now you guys did about-face, and now it's like, it's like, welcome to the city and, you know. But what do I do with the summons? I don't want to go to court. I, you know, I don't want to spend, you know, I just, I spent the $142 just to delay this so we can negotiate, you know. So do I forget the summons, or, and?
I think Jim can answer your question, our attorney.
The reason that there were two summons was that when the first one was served, the sheriff served your ex-wife on the property. She doesn't live, as far as we know, I guess we, we assumed she doesn't live on the property. So therefore, that service was defective. The city decided to hire, legal division decided to hire a private, excuse me, a private process server, and for some reason, that individual found your ex-wife on the property. Now, that's between you and your ex-wife, whether she should be on the property.
No, that was, that was my girlfriend that accepted that summons.
Well, but does she live on the property?
Yes.
Okay, then that's, it was indicated that, that it was your ex-wife on that summons. So, but the point is, is if you, the only thing I can suggest, I can't represent you, is to retain an attorney. But until the council directs me, or directs legal division on how to proceed, I can tell you, legal division is going to take no further action on the three cases that are pending until we have, legal division has direction from these good folks on how they want us to proceed. So, all I can say is, we're not going to push the lawsuits. And I suspect if we don't have a determination from council on how to proceed, and they approve us, and it sounds like, and I can't speak for them, they may, then again, they may not, approve us protecting the city's interests. We will file the other three suits, and then we'll back off and do whatever the council tells legal they want us to do.
Okay. Question from Eric here.
So, just a thought, if it turns out that we annex you, you will be represented by, I don't know whom, but somebody, you'll be represented by Dennis. And you might think about asking Dennis to introduce an ordinance providing, for example, a, some sort of rebate consideration, especially for people who don't have sewer connections. Now, that's, would be, you know, not an, not an unreasonable thing to do. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm actually talking a hypothetical, because I don't know if we're going to, you know, annex you, but, but assuming, but if, if we do, then you do have representation here. And, and I for one would be sympathetic to that on the grounds that you are a special case because you don't have this, the sewer connection that we apply, you know, that we do supply typically to Urbana residents.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Laurel?
Yeah, I have a question. Does the Urbana sanitary district, Urbana-Champaign sanitary district, give rebates to people who are not connected?
Not that I'm aware, but they're not, one, excuse me, earlier, one of the residents said they were paying taxes into the sanitary district. They do not use their tax levying ability. They're all about connection fees. So they don't actually assess any taxes.
So you're not paying for the sanitary district, apparently, because it would only be based on water usage, which is metered by American, Illinois American Water. So I don't think you are paying the tax, which is interesting. They don't levy a property tax, they just do it based on usage. So that's one injustice gone.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Goes to council. Next up is ordinance 2014-11, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fire material donations for fiscal year 2013-2014. Chief Nylinger, are you up?
Okay, this ordinance is to add into our, to the annual budget. Money's donated by Meyer for the Fire Prevention Week activities that took place October 7th through the 11th, 2013. And each year, the department hosts the local schools for the Fire Prevention Week and education activities. One night during that week is dedicated to family education and a dinner with the firefighters. And so Meyer donated this money and to put the revenue back into our budget, we need this ordinance passed. And also Walmart donated $2,000 for the annual shop with a firefighter night that took place on December 11th, 2013. And again, each year, the Fire Prevention Division and the fire marshal takes local families shopping. The families are recommended by the Urbana School District, and they go to Walmart and to Meyer to buy clothing and other necessary items. Historically, Walmart has provided gift cards for this, and they changed their policy. So instead of providing gift cards, now they provide cash for us to purchase the, the items for the families. And so we have to get this revenue also added to our budget to reimburse for the shop with the firefighter. And finally, Urbana Fire Department received a $500 donation from a private citizen in appreciation of the work that the Fire Prevention Division does. This money was used for the home fire life safety program. And I think you guys know that every Saturday from May through October, the fire department knocks on the doors of the Urbana residents to perform home fire life safety checks. That includes like smoke detector batteries and smoke detectors, and they'll do, make recommendations to residents on, on life safety issues in their homes. And so we need to put this $500 also in our budget. And so we're recommending that the ordinance revising the annual budget for fiscal year 2013-14 for the fire marshal donations be approved. So, is there any questions?
I'd move the ordinance be advanced to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mike and seconded by Dennis to send to council with a recommendation for approval. Questions for Brian? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that goes to council. Next up is ordinance number 2014-12, an ordinance vacating a portion of Guardian West Drive cul-de-sac. Bill Gray.
Thank you. What's before you is a request by the representatives from the Guardian West bumper plant to ask for vacation of a portion of Guardian Drive, which is north of Butzel Drive, which is north of University Avenue. This would help facilitate the footprint of a new dust collection equipment system for their manufacturing operation. The way the existing dedicated right-of-way is would interfere with that footprint of that, of that piece of equipment. So basically, they're asking us to vacate a portion of this cul-de-sac bulb, and we would have an offset cul-de-sac, which is fine, would operate and function fine. So the documentation, the ordinance, the plat before you is to facilitate that.
I'd like to move approval.
Yeah, second. Quick question, Bill. We have, I guess, was there, okay, the ordinance wasn't attached to the memo.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, that's what it is.
And tonight, I, I did pass out, hopefully everybody received a copy of the ordinance that would allow that to happen. So the wherés is, explain what we're doing here.
Laurel?
Does this address a fire hazard, the dust reduction? Is that the main reason?
That is a portion of the reason, yes. Yeah, there had been some fire-
Yeah, I think we had a problem. Yeah, okay, thanks.
It was moved by Eric, or moved by Carol and seconded by Eric. Dennis?
Bill, it looks like the reconfiguration of a cul-de-sac, does that require then reconstruction and pavement change? And who pays for that if that happens?
No. Well, the developer property owner does, but actually, the actual cul-de-sac hasn't been completed yet. That was going to be completed pending the development of Lot 104, which hasn't happened yet. So fortunately, they don't have to remove any pavement.
Yeah, it's a, it's a nice, clean swap. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That goes to council. Thanks, Bill. Next, I guess you're up on the next one. Next up is an ordinance, is ordinance number 2014-013, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2013-14, Main Street, Cedar Street to Vine Street. Bill?
The Main Street project is essentially completed. There'll be some restoration work this spring that'll be performed by some Arbor Division crew members. During the project, there were some cost expenses that came about. Some of the more significant ones were the vault that was discovered during some work at the northwest corner of Broadway and Main Street that was expensive to properly repair. And a decision that we made, once the contract was awarded, was to include milling and resurfacing water streets between Race and Broadway. The street condition was not great, and this would kind of finish off that old, whole area town with a new resurfaced street. There's a listing of other items here that weren't quite as expensive, but when you add up the 12 or so items that were encountered during this project, that adds up to about $100,000 that we do not have budgeted. And the budget amendment ordinance would allow for local motor fuel taxes to pay for these items.
Diane?
I move we send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Eric. Any further discussion? I only wish we could do all of our streets re-milling and paving them for this $100,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Goes to council. And next up is resolution number 2014-11R, resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, 2014 miscellaneous street reconstruction.
Before you is four streets that are in very poor condition that have, are being looked at to be reconstructed. They're basically a chip-and-seal gravel-ish type of street. The four locations include a portion of Country Club Road, a portion of Willow Road, a portion of Willow View Road, which serves the Willow Springs subdivision, and then lastly, Park Street, which is near the Five Points East shopping retail area there. So these are streets that are estimated to cost no more than $300,000. We're using state and motor fuel taxes to reconstruct these streets. We would be going out for bids this spring for construction this summer. And just to clarify, this is not, to be confused with another list of streets that will be resurfaced, milled and resurfaced mostly. That'll be a much larger motor fuel tax resolution that'll be coming before you in the next few months. So these are two separate projects.
I'd like to move this to council for approval.
And I'll second.
Moved by Carol, seconded by Dennis, send this to council. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That goes to council. And next up is ordinance number 2014-14, an ordinance, 1-4, an ordinance repealing Urbana City Code, Chapter 20, titled Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, and establishing a new Chapter 20 titled Public Right-of-Way and Other Public Places.
Just as a brief introduction while Brad goes to the front table, this is a rewrite of our public right-of-way ordinance that's been in the works for a while, for the last year. Brad Bennett and his staff, along with legal division, have been working with the respective staff members in the city of Champaign and coordinating an update of the public right-of-way ordinance. Our ordinance largely mirrors their ordinance. There are a few exceptions to that. But I'd like to introduce Brad and ask him to go through at least kind of overview of what, what we are looking at wanting approval for.
Thank you, Bill. Once again, I'm Brad Bennett, Assistant City Engineer. Want to start out, apologize, I'm fighting a head cold, so apologize for sounding nasally and sniffily. I'd like to start out too by thanking the legal division. In particular, Jim, Jack, and Kurt have all spent a, a significant amount of time working on the ordinance and have put a lot of effort into preparing the document that you see before you this evening. Start with a little bit of background. Like to explain a little bit about what public right-of-way is, you know, for the general audience. This is the legal definition of it. I like to think of public right-of-way as basically the publicly-owned property that we use for transportation purposes, whether it's automobile vehicles or bicycles on the street or pedestrian traffic. Looking at it graphically, this is an example of what the public right-of-way is. And like I mentioned earlier, it does include your sidewalk, your street, and your, your parkway. You can see typically when you have sidewalks, you know, typically the right-of-way line is at the, the back of the sidewalk or within a foot or two of it. In some areas that don't have sidewalks, you know, it's at where that property line was established when the street was dedicated to the city. So using our, our GIS software, just to show you some examples of what public right-of-way looks like here in Urbana, you know, here's an example on Green Street, where you have sidewalks on both sides of the street. And you can see, the yellow line is the property line, which- line, which is also indicative of where the public right-of-way is. So, you can see that's an example where the public right-of-way goes right to the back of the sidewalk. Similar situation on Briar Cliff Drive, but you know, here there's no sidewalks, so you can see that appears the public right-of-way goes up a lot further into the yard. I'll try to keep tonight's presentation fairly short, because I know the hour's getting late, but just to explain a little bit about public right-of-way and the type of activities that are regulated in it, some examples of the work done, and this can be by utilities or contractors or by individual property owners, sewer repairs and installation, driveway approach repairs and installation, sidewalk repairs, utility repairs and installations, dumpsters and portable storage container placement, the sale of food and beverages in sidewalk cafes, staging of transportation or construction equipment, installation improvement structures, including signs, awnings, sidewalk vaults, and other items, containment of environmental pollution, which gets to some of our highway authority agreements, and then landscaping irrigation system, rain gardens, and bioswales. A little background about the existing ordinance that we're looking at replacing. It's entitled Chapter 20 Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places. It was adopted back in 1975, with revisions being made up to it until 2009. There are some weaknesses with the existing ordinance. First of all, it's not very well organized. There's not a real logical organization to the way it's put together. There's also not a lot of technical information in it as far as how the, you know, street pavement patches are to be made, or how the sewer connections are to be made. A lot of that is left to the discretion of the city engineer. And it doesn't cover all aspects of all the complex elements that we deal with in right-of-way. Obviously, back in 1975, there wasn't a lot of fiber optic, there wasn't a lot of telecom that are all competing for space within the public right-of-way that we have nowadays. So, some of the reasons we looked at and undertook the process of updating the ordinance, one was incorporate the current best management practices related to right-of-way. Another was to improve consistency and coordination with Champaign. We wanted to try to have a ordinance that was as similar to Champaign's as possible. We felt that would be beneficial to the contractors and utilities that are in both cities and have to deal with both units of government. We wanted to better manage and protect the investments in the city right-of-way. Obviously, the time the city street is cut into, we want to protect that investment we've made in the pavement and make sure that the patch is as good as the original street and lasts as long or longer than the pavement that was removed. We also wanted to reorganize it into more logical categories and make it more usable document. And then finally, we wanted to separate the technical standards into a separate document that would make it easier to access those technical standards and easier for us to update those as they change over time. Going quickly through the ordinance revision process, it was almost a three-year process. We started back in 2011, back in October. We use the Illinois Municipal League Model Right-of-Way Ordinance as a template. We started with that as kind of a base. And then what took a significant amount of time for both engineering and legal to do, we reviewed all our existing ordinance language and policies around right-of-way and made sure that those were covered and incorporated in that model ordinance. So, there's nothing that's in our existing ordinance that isn't also addressed in the new ordinance. We also included input from our right-of-way technician and other staff on their practical experience of dealing with the existing right-of-way ordinance, you know, what were the weaknesses, what were things that we needed to address. We had internal review and coordination with Public Works, Legal, Community Development, and Fire and Police to have them review it and get any comments or revisions that they had. And we also did coordination with the city of Champaign to try to match up our ordinance as closely as possible. So, you can see, that's one of the reasons it was quite a significant effort. Going through significant changes to the Chapter 20 from the old versus the new, I'll point out now, for most contractors and homeowners, they probably will not notice a different difference. Most of the changes are geared more for the utilities, you know, particularly on the franchise side of it. So, you know, the fees remain the same, it's still $75 for the permit. They still have to come and get the permit. That process is still very, much the same for individual property owners and contractors. But the significant changes include we reorganized it into a much more logical, easier to follow, easier to find things in the ordinance. We did require everyone to get right-of-way permits. Right now, there's some ambiguity on whether franchise holders have to get right-of-way permits. It's very clear in the new ordinance that they do. There is a reason we want this, because we want to be able to check their traffic control and the pavement patches to make sure that they are doing a good job, which is something that we don't have the control or authority over right now. We looked at a modernization of construction techniques, particularly requirements on where utilities could be located. With all the different fiber optic and telecom utilities coming in, the space within the public right-of-way is becoming very crowded, so we wanted to have really up-to-date best management practices as far as where different utilities could be located to prevent any conflicts and any, you know, costly future relocations. We also made changes to clarify the requirements, to standardize use of defined terms, and provide a more general principles. Legal was a huge help in that, as far as, you know, having very clear, understandable language that didn't leave any ambiguities. And then finally, you know, we were able to separate out the technical standards and put those in a separate right-of-way standard documents, which is a standalone document that contains all the real technical information as far as how repairs and utilities are handled within the right-of-way. The public input process on it, we did make a significant effort to engage the public. We posted the proposed ordinance and right-of-way standards on the city website in April 2013 with a request for public comment. We also sent out postcard notifications to all holders of right-of-way permits that had gotten a right-of-way permit over the last two years from the city, asking them for comment. The deadline that we had for public comment was May 31, 2013, and we did not receive any comments. We have left the ordinance and the standards still up on the website since May, so people have had additional time to comment on it if they'd like. We also presented the ordinance and the standards at the Champaign Utility Coordination Committee meeting in March 2013. That's a meeting that Champaign hosts that has all the major utilities attend it. You know, for example, Illinois American, Ameren, AT&amp;T, Comcast are all participants in that, and they were given a chance to comment on both our ordinance and Champaign's. And the only comment the utility companies had was they were not happy about the right-of-way permit requirement comment. They would prefer not to have to get right-of-way permits from the city. So, that kind of covers up, or covers the presentation that I had. I will point out, Champaign went through and adopted their ordinance back in September 2013, and you know, we did, ours mirrors theirs very closely. There obviously are some differences between Champaign and Urbana, and we did preserve some of the uniqueness. So, with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Dennis?
Yeah, okay. So, I had maybe four areas I wanted to ask about.
Okay.
So do I.
Okay, so, you know, it's kind of funny how, I mean, you did a very excellent job, and I really liked the idea that you went through and kind of combined all the elements that have to do with this issue of right-of-way and made it into like a very concise package, easily to access and much more laid out. So, and I've noticed that the Legal Department and your department have gone through in many different ordinances, cleaning things up and really updating them, so I really appreciate that. So, I'm reading, and I don't really know the background of some of the things I'm going to question about, but maybe you can help me. There's a section 20 on page six. It's under, it's one of the first things you get under General, and it's about addresses, and it's about, must be about assigning address numbers to city blocks and buildings. And it sounds like there's a, you know, we don't want them to be misidentified because of delivery of mail and many other things, but on part D, it says that it shall be an affirmative defense that the person charged with the violation of this section, or it's a person who maybe misnumbered something, has no legal right to remove the incorrect number. That seems very anti-intuitive. I don't understand what's just trying to happen. I would think that you would want them and force them to replace the incorrect number with the correct number, but they have no right to do so. So, how does that play out, and who does have the right? Do they have to get permission from someone to do that correctly?
I don't know the answer to that, Dennis. I will have to check into that and get back to you on that one.
All right, that's just, I just had, that didn't make any sense, and you know, I guess we're trying to make more sense, but not less sense. Okay, under depositing of snow and ice, the city engineer, this is page seven, it says, section A there says, unless authorized in writing by the city engineer, no person shall deposit or place any snow or ice resulting from clearing operations on any street or Do you want, I mean, the staff, the city staff is constantly moving snow and ice from sidewalks into the street to be picked up or whatever. So, are you talking about private companies removing snow and ice from private property? And if so, would you want to be saying that, that you're talking about private property?
Yeah, I believe you're correct. It would not be applicable to city crews removing snow. It would be for private property owners.
So, you might want to say that specifically?
Yeah, we could make that clarification.
Okay, right. I had a concern as, because way back when, when I first entered City Council, one of the issues that were in, really prominent in my neighborhood was the preservation of brick sidewalks. So, on page 29, we're talking about the vegetive control, I guess it's, and then there's, they're, okay, it's additional requirements concerning the repair and maintenance of sidewalks, including existing brick sidewalks. It starts on page 28, and it goes to page 29, there's several different features about it. And halfway down the page, there's a number three. Notwithstanding the restrictions set forth in this section concerning the retention of brick sidewalks, which my understanding is that that retention of brick sidewalks is well-defined in a rather lengthy document and ordinance about brick sidewalk maintenance and protection. Those sections of brick sidewalk that need not be retained, where the city council finds that due to changes in the vicinity of a specific request for a waiver, a brick sidewalk no longer serves as an enhancement. And in such cases, the waiver may be granted by a motion passed by the majority of vote of the alderpersons when holding office. That clause seems to me to subvert the whole purpose of protecting brick sidewalks, and I'm not sure who it is who's going to be determining that it's no longer an amenity or an enhancement, when it seems like the protection of brick sidewalks is all about the fact that it's a historic aspect and it's, it's an enhancement in a neighborhood. But I realize that there are designated brick sidewalk streets, and that some streets, we do have brick sidewalks, but it's the, whether they are to be retained as brick or can be replaced by cement, must be determined by 60% of the people, the property owners on that street. So, I'm wondering if this somehow weakens our brick sidewalk protection.
First of all, this is language from the original ordinance, so it was just migrated into here, so there's no changes by what Brad and his staff did.
So, this is not a new invention or intervention?
No, and even the previous one, all three you've mentioned so far, were not changes at all from what was somewhere else in the ordinance, so we'll clarify them, so.
So, this is, they're appearing here because you collected them because they do it with right-of-way?
Yes, yeah. But number three is there, and I recall that, it was mid-'90s that we went through this major effort. And you're correct, it's been rare that this would happen, but I think it's in there in the event there may be some reason, and I can't tell you what it would be at this point, that city council may agree, you know, the sky is blue today, we want to make this a concrete walk around in blue, and you all agree or something, but, so. But there are, there have been examples, certainly with streets, where staff has gone to council to seek approval to convert, but generally, the major brick block walks have remained as major brick block walks, but, or, I can tell you, we've had situations where we've had major brick block walks, and the majority or all of the citizens or property owners on that block didn't want the brick anymore, and they want it replaced in concrete. And I know we've done a lot of that.
And we've replaced the north side of Green Street entirely to make it a wheelchair-accessible pathway from the city building to Victory Park.
Correct.
And we all agreed about that, though, at least we came up.
Correct, yeah.
Right. All right, well, that satisfies me, and I've got two more. All right. On page 39, hey, I have the right to ask questions. On page 39, they're talking about closing sidewalk vaults. And I know that in front of the shoe store on Main Street, it was discovered, kind of like surprising everybody, except for maybe, I don't know, owner of the shoe store, that there was a, there was a subterranean vault under the, under the street. That used to be a way of delivery to goods and services into lower levels, you know, in days when there wasn't much room or other kind of access to buildings. Well, part of their interior wall was crumbling, and they excavated and they discovered that there was indeed this vault under there. Probably nobody knew about it, except for the store owner. And even for the stoner and owner, I think it was sealed, and that they weren't even necessarily aware that it was there. So, wouldn't those vaults be kind of grandfathered in because they are pre-existing conditions? I guess I wasn't sure what you were achieving by, page 39, the very first section 20-626, closing sub sidewalk vaults, and that they have to be licensed. Is this kind of, there's, nothing's being grandfathered in, these are all old vaults. How do you obtain a license, you have to retain, have a license now to have those things? Is this new?
If there was to be a new vault, you know, constructed.
If there was to be a new vault.
But, correct. There are vaults, pretty much only downtown, pretty much on Main Street, Race Street area, that we're aware of some still. And technically, you may not know this, the property line, in most cases goes, like in those businesses on the north side, their property line is three, four feet south of the face of the building, and that's where those vaults are.
So, the vaults are exceeding the property line?
Right. So, they're on private property. Okay. But I know in Race Street as an example, there may be a time where we're going to have to knock on the property owner's door and say, you know, you know, this thing, we need to do something about the vault. It's decaying, deteriorating, what have you. Okay. In the case of what happened this past year, we caused the issue, it was our issue to fix, what have you, but there may be a time when we will have to ask the property owner that it's going to have to be sealed up, filled in, what have you.
And I know that we also discovered by happenstance and good luck, a whole section of the rail line in the middle of the street from the, I don't know, the interurban.
Interurban, yes.
Well, it was fascinating to look at, and I wished that we could have left that exposed and incorporated into something like a garden spot or a median, you know, I mean, historic median view thing.
We have pictures.
Pictures, yeah.
We have lots of pictures.
But what happened is it got totally poured over with cement, and it's now a safe crossing walkway, which we wanted to have there too, so. All right, one last question. In the, the next thing that happens is, there's a, Division 6 deals with newspaper dispensing devices in the courthouse block, and there are four and a half pages of regulation. Can you please explain how a small unit of like 15 or 20 little cubby holes requires four and a half pages of direction? Because what, they've been really misused? Or what's, what, can you explain that?
This goes back to the effort we made to take everything out of the existing ordinance and carry it into the new. I mean, all the language in there was verbatim from the old ordinance, and we literally copied it out of it, so. And my understanding historically, there was a lot of effort that went into writing that initially. Apparently, at one time, it was a big issue.
It was a big issue.
Lot of research, but I think the Legal Division... Lot of research, but, um, I think the legal division, you know, was able to write this in as compact and as efficient as they could.
As compact as possible, huh?
Yes, yes, so.
We are.
Right.
That's right.
But through the years, to be honest with you, this is important because through the years, there have been discussions of where to put them, particularly in the right of way, and chain the light poles and fire hydrants and what have you. And so, we needed to be respectful of free speech and, you know, First Amendment rights, but at the same time, it couldn't, you know, block public, you know, access, pedestrian access, these sorts of things. There's a fine line, and I think it just took a little bit of effort to define this properly. And I know we researched a variety of communities in putting this together.
Well, my congratulations, James Dickens.
Laurel.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it was, it was a big deal because we had to negotiate with the county, because the sheriff is in charge of, of the courthouse grounds, but we finally got it worked out and it was going to be an art thing and, you know. So, it finally got done.
Eric?
I was just going to say that it's as compact as it could be, given the number of concerns raised by conscientious alderpeople.
Thank you. That was the last question that I had. I'm still confused, but that's fine.
Quick, uh, four quick ones here, I hope. A-10, how can we expect somebody who damages newly-laid street or sidewalk pavement if they don't see a barricade in the dark or because they can't see it, period? We're saying that, you know, says, street or sidewalk, regardless of whether or not the street or sidewalk is guarded by a warning sign or barricade. I mean, somebody lays fresh cement and doesn't put up a guard and I drive through it, I'm going to be suing the city, and you're telling me that, yeah, I'm going to be stuck in more ways than one. I'm going to be suing the city as opposed to taking responsibility for it.
Well, again, this language is probably older than Brad and I put together here, and I think if we want to make some changes, this is an opportunity to change it. I can tell you as a matter of practice that, you know, we will put up worker signs, barricades, that sort of thing, in typically any, in all these situations. But I think this was perhaps written in pre-1970 or whatever, that, you know.
Yeah, if legal could look at that, maybe that's a better way to say that. Next page, A-11, this is a more important thing to me. I'd like to understand, in section, water discharge onto right of way prohibited. We talk about discharges from sump pumps, and they have to be relocated, blah, blah, blah. What are people allowed to do with sump pumps now? Can they hook them to sanitary or to?
Storm.
Or to storm? They can't hook them to storm?
Yeah, you're not, not allowed to hook them to sanitary. That's actually prohibited by ordinance. But you can hook them to the storm, or you can just discharge them in your side yard or even your front yard or backyard, as long as it doesn't drain out onto the street or sidewalk and create a hazard.
Okay, well, you know, I've got a downspout that's 12 feet from the street, yet it probably creates a hazard on the sidewalk because it runs down a hill. Um, you know, so technically, I would be in violation here, I think.
Well, usually, we don't have a problem with downspouts. Usually, it's with sump pumps.
Yeah, okay, so, so a sump pump owner could, could basically work with the city to get it rerouted. If they wanted to get it directly into the storm, they could.
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, that's what I want.
In fact, we have an assistance program to help them with the cost share.
Okay, good. Then on, uh, A-32, emergencies may excuse compliance with normal procedures for securing. So, if there's a water main break, the water company can get in there and just do what it needs to do and get a permit later.
Correct.
Okay? And then, uh, A-35, annual registration required. So, that's just, is that for people who have, like the water company, they need to get an annual, they need to register annually? Is that the, is that the way to read that?
Correct. And a lot of that is just to make sure that we have their current contact information for getting hold of them if there is a, an issue that we need to coordinate with them on. You know, people move around within the organizations, there's been a lot of retirements in these different utilities as they.
Okay, so it's basically just like our rental registration?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Diane?
This is back to page 11, water discharge onto right of way. We've had a lot of discussions about rain gardens on the public right of way. This seems to be talking about only discharge onto sidewalks, but is there a provision for homeowners who want their downspouts to drain into their rain garden? Is that a, is that prohibited by this or is it covered by this?
No, I mean, it's not prohibited. There is a section in the, the technical standards, the right of way standards, that actually has the license agreement, if you want to put the rain garden in the public right of way, which we had one homeowner that did a couple of years ago.
Right.
If you're going to put the rain garden on your private property, you don't have to get any permission from the city.
Right.
You can do that. But if you want to locate it in the public right of way, you know, in that parkway between the sidewalk and the street. You would have to get a license agreement from the city, and we've got that template in the technical standards.
In this document or in a different document?
It's in the technical standards.
Of this?
Which is, it's a separate document.
Okay.
It, I'm sorry, it's not, it wasn't included in your packet. You could access, it's on the city website.
Okay.
So, yeah, so one of the things we should note here is that in approving this, we're basically approving the city engineer revising the right of way technical specifications as needed, right?
Yes.
So, that's a point that everybody should understand. Dennis?
So, I guess, all right, because you've answered my questions, I think, and these seem to be very useful, I guess what I'll do is, I'll recommend that these be approved and sent to a council with a prior approval.
Second.
So, I make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Dennis and seconded by Diane to send to council with recognition for approval. Mike, did you have?
Yeah, just real quickly, uh, do you have a, like a redlined version of this document that you can show? You're talking about, you pulled in a lot of stuff verbatim from other ordinances. Is there a redlined version that exists?
I believe we do have a version, and in fact, we talked about with legal whether to include that in the council packet to you, but it was such a massive rewrite, it was so much red, we decided not to include that in the packet, but we can provide you with that if you want to see it.
Well, if it's just going to confuse things, I, I guess I was just more curious about if you have a document that shows what's new and what's, what's existing, but I mean, if it's, I would understand if that's a very difficult thing to do.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a complete rewrite and reorganization, because like I said, we use the Illinois Municipal League template as a standard, which, there are some advantages to using that, because a lot of communities have adopted the Illinois Municipal League. So, you know, for utility companies and contractors, it does kind of create more of a level playing field, you know, because communities have used that as a template, you know, have similar type rules. So, you know, there is some consistency, you know, between us and Champaign, and Decatur's adopted it, and other communities across the state have adopted that, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I assume some of the points that were raised here will be clarified between now and next week.
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah, and just to add on, this is a lot to swallow, and I realize you just had barely a week to look at this. And it's a good time that we wanted to bring it together early this year to kind of, you know, get your thoughts, good questions. If you have more questions, please email them to Brad and I. And even if this does get approved, you know, at the next council meeting and there's still questions or issues that come up forthcoming, you know, bring those to our attention and we'll address them. I think Brad mentioned earlier, or council member Marlin mentioned it, but, you know, we did have kind of a big issue not too long ago with, you know, rain gardens or bio swales in public right of way. And we went through a process, there was a fairly big deal for managing right, rights of ways. And I think the biggest challenge we have now in managing our public right of way is how crowded they're getting with utilities, particularly fiber utility companies. And that's, that's a concern we have, because we're getting pretty busy out there, particularly like on Lincoln Avenue or what have you. And so, this will help us continue to, you know, manage those situations.
It isn't every day you get to replace an entire chapter of city ordinance. Carol?
I'd like to move this.
It's already, is, we already have?
Oh, have we done that?
Yeah, we got, we have a motion on the floor.
Oh, okay, well, I'd support it. Let's, let's vote for it.
Okay, any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It goes to council. Thank you, folks. Before Mike Madigan recuses himself, is there anything else anybody needs to say before we jump into these five liquor ordinances? Okay, I think, yeah, Diane?
Are any of these liquor licenses new for the location or are many of them due to changes in ownership?
I think we'll go through them one by one. It'll become clear, right? You know, we'll get that as to go through.
Okay.
For the record, please note that Mike Madigan is recusing himself from discussion of these five items.
Finally, benefit to having a liquor license.
That's right.
Okay, first up is ordinance number 2014-14, 1-4, and ordinance repealing, oh, I'm sorry, we already did that one. Ordinance number 2014-1-5, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class R1 liquor licenses for Uncle Martin Incorporated, 1104 North Cunningham Avenue.
Okay, um, this is a new one because I don't think the business that failed there had a liquor license. This is the one that's replacing the, sort of a southern barbecue place.
Yeah, Louise.
And he's a very well-respected business owner.
And he owns, he has other liquor licenses in the city already, right?
I'm assuming that he knows what he's doing and it will be a successful business.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dennis, to send to council with recognition for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Goes to council. Next up is ordinance number 1, 2014-1-6, 1-6, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class R2 liquor licenses for Urbana Gardens Restaurant, 810 Kilarney Street.
So moved.
That, yeah, that's a new one.
This is also a new one. They're adding a liquor.
But they're an existing restaurant, but they're adding a liquor license.
Okay.
Well, I'll second.
It's been, was moved by Carol, seconded by Dennis, to send to council. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Goes to council. Next up is ordinance 2014-1-7, 1-7, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, deja vu, increasing number of Class Triple B liquor licenses for Omsay LLC, doing businesses at Urbana Mini-Mart at 1701 South Phila Road.
Okay, they have a B now and they're going to a Triple B, and I'm going to have to find out tomorrow what the difference is between those two, but I think that Triple B has more categories. But I'll give you the precise definition before.
But they're currently, they're currently selling.
They're currently a liquor license holder, right?
Move that we send this to council with a motion for approval.
Second. Moved by Diane, seconded by Eric. Carol, you have a question?
I do have a question, but I think you have an audience participant who wants to speak to this issue.
I don't know if that 1701 Phila Road is one that was previously requested. What word is that?
No, that's, they already have one. They've got one. They've got a Class B and they're going to a Triple B.
It's north of McDonald's.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah. Further discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I was stuck into, I was just going to ask, because I asked the mayor, she would clarify what the Triple B does.
Right.
That's at the corner, I think, of Phila Road in Florida, and I'm just concerned about extension in that area.
Yeah.
And for the purposes of.
That's the gas station, yeah.
Yeah, of clarifying that point, although I think the council will move it, I'll withhold my yes until I can get clarity.
Well, we're going to get a report. This is just sent to council, so we'll know next week.
You'll get it before council anyway.
Yeah. Further discussion?
Just for the record.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so it goes to council.
Okay, and then, um.
And the last one, or, Nick, we have two more here. Ordinance number 2014-1A, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, 343, increasing the number of Class R1 liquor licenses for Black Rock Pizza Company LLC at 142 Lincoln Square.
So, they're changing from an A to an R1. They're changing to a restaurant license.
So moved.
Yeah, I'll second. So, that's from a bar to a restaurant, is that what, yeah, okay. That makes sense. Was moved by Dennis and seconded by, oh, moved by Carol, seconded by Dennis.
Right.
Sorry. Just hear two voices at the same time. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? To council it goes. Last item is ordinance number 214-19, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for T and R Food Mart, doing businesses at Urbana Food and Liquor, 1509 East Washington Street.
Okay, this is a new owner keeping the same category of license as the previous owner, a C.
And he's met all your, all the criteria.
Right.
Okay, I'll move approval. Second. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Carol?
I just had a clarifying question. I think I just heard that this is the one that was home run, that we just removed the license, or the council did prior to me coming.
Well, this is a new owner, an existing, yeah. There was an existing C there and they sold the business, and the new owner is, wants a C also, so it doesn't change the number of licenses or the quality of the license.
Well, I guess I'll just raise the same concern. My concern is more area, thank you, environment, and the concerns that brought this to the council in the first place, to remove the liquor license from that location. I don't know how closely related any of the new people are to the previous, but I'll, again, withhold my yes vote on this one because I'm concerned about the location of that.
Mayor, I assume.
Yeah, we haven't had any problems. The police department has not noticed any problems, and a new license holder gets a very thorough background check with a national police report.
Bill?
Um, I think Home Run also had some special security arrangements or something about fencing and parking and stuff. Does that carry over to the new owner?
We, that was a problem property before. It's not a problem property now.
So, they don't have the same agreements?
Right. Well, they may have the same agreement. I don't think we took stuff down, but maybe the police chief is.
Dennis, then Carol.
I don't think we have a problem, but I will get more information for you before.
Okay.
I will be here next Tuesday, but I will get you the information, okay?
Okay. Dennis, then Carol.
And I just wanted to know who the owner was and more information about like who, you know, who it is, who's operating this.
A thoroughly-checked individual. However, we will, we'll give you the information.
Because I have the same concerns for this neighborhood that Carol, I mean.
But you know that they do, there is a liquor license there now.
I do know that.
Okay? And there has not been a problem.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, do you know of any problems?
Not recently.
There used to be problems. It used to be a really big problem area.
There always problems. There's many problems, but specifically.
But there hasn't been since the old owners got their liquor license yanked by me.
Yeah, that was a very excellent thing, but this is new.
Every once in a while, I do something right, guys.
Carol, I missed Bill, so Bill, then Carol, sorry.
I just wanted to also point out that the gas station immediately to the east already has a liquor license. I don't know if it's the same, is it the same class? So, it wouldn't necessarily be an expansion, it'd just be more competition, maybe lower prices.
I doubt it, but. And I think that is part of my concern and my absolutely strong no vote at this point on this particular one and this location. No, there hasn't been any problems at this point because there was some steps taken by this council to reduce the problems, and as a result, I believe it worked. I think the chief might agree that it might have done some impact and it may have worked. But again, yes, we do have access to, I mean, we have so many liquor establishments, people still get access. Access is not an issue. But in some areas, we do want to limit, if we can, and I think in this case we can, limit limit the direct access that does drive part of the social dynamics in certain areas, and this is definitely one of them. So I am, I'm going to vote no on this issue, and I think at some point the council does not have to approve all of the liquor license, and I'm supportive of liquor licenses for our restaurants and our businesses and our big, but neighborhoods, smaller, corner store, developments that lend to this urban issue that we experience, I'm not supportive of, so I'll, I'll vote no on that.
I would like to say that we don't like to see empty businesses either, and as long as they're running a decent business, they haven't caused.
I mean, they're making money on all their other things.
I know, they haven't caused any problems, but if you don't give them a liquor license, they bought it with the understanding that they were gonna continue that same type of business, so you, you might wanna consider that as well.
Yeah, I'm really, I think that would be a, just a really, I don't know, a very bad precedent if you withhold a liquor license from an establishment because of problems that were there two owners ago. That's, I, I don't, I don't get that as being an appropriate way to, to treat a business.
Dennis?
And we're having conversation about appropriateness here, so it was interesting that the Lurman Neighborhood Action Committee didn't really oppose the sale of guns in the neighborhood, but they suggested that there would be better places to locate their business than the neighborhood. So they took a position that, on the question of gun sales in the neighborhood, that they didn't have anything, there wasn't really anything wrong with sale of guns, but they encouraged the person who wanted to locate to look for a more appropriate and maybe more advantageous location, which they actually did then. So, now we've had liquor sales on this corner for quite a long time, and the building, and the shop next door has the same. Those individuals who have a difficulty, you know, it's very difficult to step into the position of being an enforcer of counsel, a counselor by conscience, and I don't know if, that's kind of vote that the city council really should be taking, I think. You have to be more objective, but I, I appreciate the concern, but I think that we're not here, we're not becoming like a blue county city, I don't think, and so by doing it in small pieces is kind of not really somehow the correct way of handling it.
Carol?
I'll just say, I, I saw a gentleman who's an English teacher who bought a home on Elm Street right here from us, and he said to me, he said, "I really liked the home, except that there's some apartments where the people across the street are, they have trouble with alcoholism," he said. He said, "But it's not necessarily the alcohol that's making them poor, I mean, it's not the poverty that makes them poor, it's the alcohol that's really driving their poverty." And I said, "In some communities, it's not a counselor of conscience that I'm representing at this point, it's the same issue to me as us preserving our streets, preserving our trees, preserving human beings and the neighborhoods they live in. This is a public safety issue, and in a neighborhood where you have high unemployment and you have all the other dynamics that you're still trying to address as a city, you already have access in many corners of the community." I think that is a, is a balancing issue that the councils and cities have approached this issue, where organizations and neighborhoods have to say, "We don't want any more liquor establishments in this particular neighborhood based on these social factors and public safety." That's really what I'm weighing, I'm not really dealing with the conscious issue. And the other thing about the current licensee there, if that person was told that they would be purchasing this business with a guarantee of a liquor license, then there's need, no need for us to have it at the council in reality, because then we're promising them something that the council then has to follow through on, even if we don't agree. And that's also problematic around this issue, so I'm, I understand why the council members will do what they do, but beyond my conscience, just from what I know we've plotted, most of the problems and what we've seen from the jail study, that is a huge issue where a lot of that comes from, and we have to be aware and conscious of that, and then, of course, make decisions based on the reality.
I would add that Washington Street serves more than just that neighborhood, it is a major east-west street, and as a viable business that we don't wanna see empty, I think that as long as the establishment is run properly and the, and the liquor, and the license holder has met the, the very significant requirements, I mean, that's why we approve every one of these, is so that every one of them gets run through the wringer, and for background checks and all that. I, I don't see how we can tell a business that it, it can't move forward unless we do it in between. If we'd done this and said, "No, we're not gonna allow any more in that location while the business was closed," that would be one thing, but for a viable business that's ongoing, I would agree with what, I don't know whether it's Dennis or said earlier, that I, I don't think we can change it after the fact.
Dennis?
Well, I, what I would invite would be the people who, well, the Lurman Neighborhood Action Committee to weigh in on this, we have time for them, time to hear from them, you know, at the next meeting and before we take our final vote, and it might, it may, it may direct us perhaps slightly differently or not, I don't know, but at least it's a thought to, to, you know, hear public input on this issue.
Okay. Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to point out that the liquor license was at that location before the one next door, so that was obviously part of the value when they sold the business. So, nobody's guaranteed, I mean, we make sure that if anybody applies for a liquor license, they know that they have to go through a background check and, and everything, and so I know that alcohol, alcohol causes problems, but I don't think that prohibition worked that well for this country, and, you know, they're just a whole attitude of people are gonna have to be responsible for their own behavior, and I don't think we're gonna save anybody by not having this business have a liquor license.
So no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Seeing no further business, we are adjourned.